About to read it.
I did.
We have a call. Good evening, I'd like to call to order this public hearing for the Urbana City Council. It's Tuesday, June 20th, 2023. This is a notice of public, of a public hearing. Notice is hereby given that the proposed annual budget for the city of Urbana in the county of Champaign, state of Illinois, for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2023 and ending June 30th, 2024 is on file and conveniently available for public inspection on the city's website. Public hearing on the proposed annual budget will be held 7:00 PM Tuesday, June 20th, 2023. Estimated revenues for the proposed budget for fiscal year 2024 are 77.5 million; estimated expenditures are 90.6 million. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Could you turn your mic on, Phyllis?
Ms. Hersi? Ms. Colacetti?
Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Wilkin?
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry? Mayor Marlin?
Here. Let the record reflect, Councilmember Sharice Hersi is approaching. Next item on the agenda is public input. If anyone wishes to address the Urbana City Council on the subject of the fiscal year 2024 budget, please step forward to the microphone. Please state your name for the record.
My name is Elizabeth Rotrammell Archie. Good evening, my name is Elizabeth Rotrammell Archie, and I live in Savannah Green. I'm here tonight to draw your attention to our neighborhood and here as an advocate for my fellow neighbors, to present to you a pressing issue that requires immediate attention: the deteriorating condition of the alleys in the Savannah Green neighborhood. As a concerned resident and active member of this community, I believe it is crucial to address this matter promptly in order to assure the safety and well-being of all residents. In 2004, I was an excited first-time homebuyer, amazed that I was able to afford a brand-new home in a unique Chicago-style neighborhood, complete with alleys. I made the leap across Ray Street and moved from being a longtime Champaign townie to the 1,400 block of Montgomery in the Savannah Green neighborhood. When I moved there, there were no houses behind mine to the east and none to the north. On moving day, I was advised not to park on the driveway as the concrete was not ready to handle large vehicles. That should have been my first sign. I asked when the alley would be paved, as it was covered in a thick layer of dirt and mud. The contractor told me it was already paved, I just couldn't see it. Yet another sign. Over the past few years, the state of the alleys in our neighborhood has been steadily declining. The surfaces have become riddled with potholes, cracks, and uneven pavement. Often, these are filled with a mixture of loose gravel, which creates even more of a mess in our alleys, driveways, and yards. The area behind my driveway has been fixed too many times to count in the last two decades. I joke when it rains that my home comes with an in-ground pool because of the large water-filled pothole at the end of my driveway. The water does not drain properly and becomes a breeding ground for mosquitoes. In the winter, these puddles freeze up, creating an ice rink that I must cross to retrieve my mail. The poor conditions are making it increasingly difficult for residents to navigate our alleys safely. They present tripping hazards, especially to the elderly and disabled neighbors. Parents have to carefully help their wily toddlers navigate a walk around the block so they don't fall down and hurt themselves. The alleyways in our neighborhood should be a safe place for children to play ball, skate, and ride bikes. Because of the potholes and uneven surfaces, I've witnessed many wipeouts, tears, and scraped-up elbows and knees. These hazardous conditions not only pose a threat to pedestrians, but also lead to damage to vehicles. My neighbors have reported alignment issues, suspension problems, and a more frequent need for tire rotations, repairs, and replacement. There is also a fear the poor alley conditions could become an obstacle for emergency service vehicles, garbage collection, mail carriers, and other essential services. Furthermore, the poor conditions of the alley has a negative impact on the aesthetic appeal of our neighborhood. In fact, some neighbors specifically warned their guests not to drive down the alleys. They are an embarrassment. Our dedicated homeowners' association has worked very hard in the last few years to make our neighborhood one we can be proud to call home. It is frustrating that the city continues to consider our neighborhood low priority. It is difficult to improve the morale of the community when the city does not wish to invest in us. We are supposed to be excited to see underdeveloped lots being built on to finally complete our little corner of Urbana. But as a result of the horrendous alley conditions, property values may be negatively affected, which could have long-term consequences for homeowners in the area. Investing in the repair and maintenance of our alleys is an essential step towards preserving the overall attractiveness and desirability of our community. I kindly request that the city council allocate the necessary funds and resources to address this issue without delay. We are so excited to hear, we were so excited to hear, that our roads and alleys were finally going to receive some much-needed TLC. Shortly after, we were devastated to hear these repairs were not in the budget. We have been calling the city, writing letters, and speaking at meetings for years. I implore you to really hear us. We are tax-paying citizens of Urbana. Why does it sometimes feel that our neighborhood is an afterthought? Repairing and resurfacing the alleys will not only improve the safety and accessibility for residents and visitors, but will also demonstrate the city council's commitment to maintaining and enhancing our neighborhood's infrastructure. Thank you for your attention into this urgent matter, and I believe we can work together towards creating a safer and more vibrant community for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to address the council on the issue of the budget? Okay, seeing no further input, this meeting is adjourned. And we'll move on to the committee of the whole meeting.
Okay, I call this meeting of the Urbana City Council Committee of the Whole to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Hersi?
Here.
Ms. Colacetti? Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Wilkin?
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry? Mayor Marlin?
Here.
Okay, next item on the agenda is approval of minutes from April 17th.
So moved. Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mary Alice and seconded by Sharice. Is there any substantive corrections? If not, are those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are those opposed? Okay, are there any additions to the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to public input. If there's anyone who would wish to address the committee of the whole, please come to the mic.
Hello. My name is Zuri White. I live in Savannah Green. And as a resident of Savannah Green, I am disappointed that the promised road construction has suddenly been canceled. Our alleys are terrible and undrivable due to the huge hole in the road. Unlike others in Urbana, our alleys are our main road that we utilize in order to get in and out of our house and cannot be avoided, and this includes emergency vehicles, mail trucks, and garbage trucks. Continuously, that we have had residents complain that their cars have been damaged, people have fallen, there have been bike accidents, children and elderly people have fallen, and this is all due to the road, to the road conditions. By now fully repairing the badly damaged roads, the city of Urbana has failed to safely and reasonably maintain our roads and are choosing to maintain these dangerous road conditions. Many residents feel the city of Urbana has overlooked Savannah Green. For example, we have constantly talked about our concerns about safety and speeding, and we have brought it up to our city council meetings. We've also brought it to the commission as well as the police for years with nothing but, we agree, it's a, it's a safety concern, but that is all that we've gotten. However, when we heard about the new infrastructure plan, we finally felt some type of value, and we felt that we were seen only to be met with disappointment again. I encourage all of you to try, to drive all of the alleys in Savannah Green, to see how dangerous these road conditions are firsthand before making a, before making a decision to continue patching what comes apart in less than a month in our alleys. Also, while you're there, you can also see the black lines that they have made on our, throughout our other streets in an attempt to, I guess, repair our roads. Instead, it has actually decreased the look of our neighborhood. And us as Urbana residents are trying to maintain a beautiful neighborhood. Our homeowners' association has worked for years to improve not only the look of our neighborhood, but our community and our impact for the city of Urbana. However, it doesn't seem that the city seems to care. Thank you.
Good, good evening, my name is Esther Pat, and I am involved with the Champaign-Urbana Tenant Union, who I'm representing here tonight. When the update to the international code, I'm sorry, I can't do this without glasses, was on your committee agenda last month, I raised a concern about a proposed language change regarding failure-to-comply tickets. And that proposed change was to make discretionary rather than mandatory fining landlords for failure to comply. And the reason for it was there are some occasions when through no fault of the landlord, the violations cannot be corrected by the deadline. One example, I mean, I think you'll hear more from the staff presentation, but one example is if, for some types of repairs, you just can't get a contractor out in a timely manner. Like masonry, for example, I mean, as homeowners, you may have that experience. A plumber to fix a toilet, you can get right away, but there are a lot of other things that can take longer. When it comes to housing inspection and addressing tenant complaints about property maintenance codes, Urbana has really been stellar throughout the years and far superior to other cities near and far, not to name any of them. But there are still problems, and then, and part of this because Urbana has lots of tools in the box. Urbana started systematic inspection back in 1977, and that is a proactive way to find, to not just rely on tenants coming to complain and to catch violations before they get way out of hand, and I think that's been very good. And there have been a number of other things you've done. But we still have difficult landlords who just won't do anything unless they're pushed. Ten years ago, the city council established mandatory fines because when fines were discretionary, they were hardly ever imposed. Two problems with that is, one, if there's no consequence for failure to comply, it is harder to get more landlords to comply. And the other is, when there's no consequence, it leaves tenants feeling like either the city doesn't care about tenants, or sometimes tenants think that their landlord is pulling strings and getting special favors here at the city. And actually, for that reason, I think the proposal that Mayor Marlin and her staff came up for tonight is a really good solution to provide the housing inspectors appropriate discretion when they need it, but to ensure tenants that code enforcement really is fair and consistent and there's no funny business going on. And the key to doing that, and really, this applies for a lot of things, is rather than giving the individual discretion, spelling out the reasons for it. So if somebody says, "Why didn't you fine my landlord when you fined someone else?", the code official or any of you, or my office can say, "Here are the reasons, one through six, that, that a, that a landlord might not get fined, and if one of those applies, that's where it is." Setting forth criteria for exceptions takes the burden and the suspicion off the individual staff people to, when they do exercise legitimate discretion, because it's clear that it's fair and consistent. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone who else? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jen Hardesty, and I'm also here to talk about the Savannah Green neighborhood. I echo what my neighbors have said, that we, as an HOA board and as a community, have been trying for about five years now to improve the conditions in our neighborhood, and we've made tremendous success. It's really hard to build up the morale of our neighborhood, though, when we can't get the cooperation from the city to make the neighborhood sense within our neighborhood. We have a Facebook group where we've shared about the concerns about the alleys, and we have many, many comments from our neighbors about how deplorable the conditions of the alleys are, especially for our neighbors who are older or have disabilities and have to walk across our alleyways to access their mailboxes. I do urge you to come, drive down our alleyways, and don't just drive down one or two of them, there's a, you know, some spots that are okay, but some that are just terrible, and ask yourself if you would be okay living with the conditions of those alleyways. So I hope that you will not put off the work on our alleys, because it's not going to get any better, and patching it is not going to help. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to address the committee of the whole? Okay, go ahead. Oh, did you, were you coming back? You could email them to us, and they'll be added into the record.
That was my statement, I got quite a few emails about this. None of them were directly asked to be read into the record, but I did want to highlight that in addition to who spoke today, we did have others. I forwarded some to the council and clerk, and we can forward others, and they can be in the record. Thank you.
Okay, if there's no more public input, we'll move on to staff reports.
Just an announcement that tomorrow night, 6:30 to 8:00 PM, there's one of the regular Urbana Park District events at Crestwood Park at 1802 South Cottage Grove. At this event, we will be celebrating the 190th birthday of the city of Urbana and invite everyone to join us at Crestwood Park.
Thank you. Moving on to unfinished business, first item is ordinance number 2023-05-014, ordinance adopting the international code councils 2021 code series.
All right, so after our last meeting, I went back and made some of the corrections, and as Ms. Prastad, we, we met with her and worked through how to make it benefit everybody, you know, as far as the failure to comply go. We ended up coming up with six exceptions, and actually talking with Mary Alice prior to the meeting, she brought up a very good one that we'll add to it as well, and that's being weather. That's one that we typically, you know, obviously, you know, being in Illinois, we know that, you know, you can't paint in the winter, so we take that in consideration, but she brought a good point, and we'll add that to the list, just so that, again, it's in writing, that way we can point to it, you know, if there's concern or question regarding the failure to comply. So, does anybody have any questions or comments regarding the, the changes? They were all sent out in the packet, the online packet.
Grace?
Oh, I just wanted to say thank you for the, the one pager, it looks like two pager, you could do both sides for the public, that looks like what I was thinking would be helpful for people, and then just confirming that we were gonna have that posted and available.
Yeah, we'll put that, once it's, you know, we get kind of finalized and everything, and it was what you guys were, the intentions were, yeah, we'll get it on the website, and then we'll also put paper copies in our office for people.
Great, thank you. And again, I appreciate taking the time to go back and show us those revisions and have more input, and it seems like we've gotten it even better than the first time around, so thank you for that.
Mary Alice?
So the other thing I wanted to draw everybody's attention to, and I'd already talked to Nick about this, is that there is a, a part in, in the section that talks about the conflict between other, other ordinances and other governing bodies. I noticed in the meeting minutes that there was a conversation about the Illinois code versus the international code, and I know that they made a clarification that Illinois state law is precedence, and then, you can correct me if I'm wrong, I read the meeting minutes, and then this code, this international code would step in if there was some gaps within the Illinois laws, is how I read those meeting minutes. But in addition, one thing that was removed, I'd like to put back in place, is that the zoning ordinance should take precedence over this code. And so that had been struck out in page 109, if anybody's looking at it online, and Nick didn't seem to have any issues with that, but...
No, and actually, I told her, I know there's other references to the zoning ordinance that apply, so I'm not sure, again, you know, that was done in the very early on, so I'm not sure who, who pushed for that, so, and I see no issues with putting that back in there, so we'll, we'll add that back under the general, under section 5.3, under article 1, so...
And then the two other things, I had just begun having conversations, there's a section on the appeals process. So the proposed appeals process is that interpretation, if somebody wants to appeal the building administrator's interpretation of the code, they can go, is it wrong?
So, I, I looked at it a little bit further after you brought that to my attention, and so that is just in, specifically to what the city added years ago under accessibility, or excuse me, visitability, so, and that only applies to single-family and two-family projects that are basically funded. So, AY 101 reads directly, "The provisions of this appendix require visitability features in new..." in new construction of one and two-family dwellings funded with financial assistance originating from or flowing through the city of Urbana and shall be in addition to other requirements of this code." So what that is, is basically accessibility for one and two-family, because the Illinois accessibility code would not apply to one and two-family.
Gotcha, okay, so it's with, when you're using funds from the city of Urbana?
Grants. It'd be a prime example of that.
Yep.
So...
And then the last one, which I did not bring up, which I thought was very interesting, because I've had this conversation with many people, is that the property maintenance code bans electrical extensions and also multipliers, right? And so that's banned in this code for property maintenance. I understand why somebody would want to ban that, but the reality is, is that everybody uses them. So if that's the reality, then we have to find a safe way to allow people to use those.
So the safe way, and typically what our, you know, we run into this a lot with our systematic inspections, again, because you're going into rental units and such. So the safe way, and what's allowed by the electrical code, is surge protectors. So, and I've never quite personally figured this out, you know, but what it really has to do with is that surge protector basically has a fuse in it. So a multiplier, you know, you just go buy it at, you know, Menards, you know, plug into the wall, there's no protection, so now you've just created that duplex outlet to having how many ever outlets that multiplier has, and so you can very easily overload that. Whereas if you use a surge protector, then before you overload that outlet, that surge protector's gonna trip. So that is typically, you know, our number-one go-to when, if somebody, you know, has, you know, is using an extension cord or a multiplier, and they need it, you know, they need it to plug in, you know, multiple things, or, you know, to make that, you know, cord just a little bit longer, then that's typically what we, you know, ask them or advise them to install, and that's accepted.
So, and perhaps I can have this conversation with you outside of here, but my experience is that nobody in this town or Amazon sells what we are recommending people to use. So we can have that conversation later.
Yeah.
But I definitely think that we need some way that people can use extension cords, because people have computers, and they always have those surge protectors, and it's just life these days.
Right.
All right, so those were, those are my items. Thank you.
Any more questions or input? Yes, Mayor Marlin.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to thank Nick Hanson and his staff for the tremendous amount of work they've put into revising this code, updating it. I also want to thank Esther Patton, the Champaign-Urbana Tenant Union, for meeting with us, and I think we've worked out what really was a very important language in this code. And I just want to quote one sentence that Esther sent us after the meeting, which I think is the key to all of this, and she said, "We believe doing so is the best way to promote the public's confidence that code enforcement is firm, fair, and consistent, and that's our goal." So thank you all very much.
Okay, I'd entertain a motion for this ordinance.
I would move for approval on the regular agenda ordinance number 2023-05-014, ordinance adopting the International Code Council's 2023 code series.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved by Grace and seconded by Sharice to approve ordinance number 2023-05-04, ordinance adopting the International Code Council's 2021 code series for approval on the regular agenda. Would the clerk call the row?
Can I have a...
Oh, I'm sorry, further discussion, yes.
I just need a clarification. I'm happy that Nick agrees with some of the suggestions that I made, but I don't know if we need to make an amendment, or if we can just have as directed to staff, if that would suffice with the items that we talked about, the weather and putting the zoning ordinance back in. Yes, I'm just asking? Do you want an amendment, or do you want, or do you want us to just move forward and...
I can add in with recently discussed changes.
That'd be perfect.
Okay. Well, I'll restate. Ordinance number 2023-05-04 was recommended for approval on a regular agenda with recently discussed changes. It was motioned by Grace and seconded by Sharice. Any further discussion?
I think you need the mover and the seconder to approve, and I'm okay with that as amended.
Okay. Would the clerk call the row?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Colasette, no, Ms. Wilken, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Can I just add one thing?
Yes.
For next week, we'll just have those two called out on a separate, you know, just on a separate sheet, so that you can see precisely the language that's being added, just to clarify. We got the gist of it, but we'll make sure that that's called out for next week.
Okay, and that ordinance passes unanimously. Next item, new business ordinance number 2023-06-018, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance, budget amendment number eight, fiscal year 2022 to 2023.
All right, good evening, everyone. So this ordinance is just to revise the fiscal year 2023's estimates from the 20, what you've seen in the proposed budget. So, and a general fund, a total of $270,000 is gonna be reduced, is gonna be reduced in fiscal year 2023's budget, and that's gonna be carried forward to fiscal year 2024's budget. And, excuse me, and then, related to the capital improvement plan, there has been changes in the CIP from the proposed budget, and so that is just to reflect what changes have been made in the CIP, which will be presented later on, on this, on the third agenda item. I think that's pretty much it in regards to the fiscal year 2023's budget. We'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mary Alice.
All right, so I apologize. I know we do this once a year, so it takes a little bit of reflecting here. So to kind of summarize, it sounds to me like this particular budget amendment is to take funds that we have not spent in fiscal year 23 and say, "We still need these funds for these purposes, but now we're gonna spend them in fiscal year 24." Is that correct?
That is correct. So that is just to reflect, it's mainly timing of the spending, the fund.
Okay. And then you said that we're gonna be talking about the SIP plan changes, because a lot of this stuff is SIP. So I'm assuming that we had planned to do some things in the capital improvement plan this year, but because of timing, we haven't spent all those funds, so now we need to move project A from fiscal year 23 to project A to fiscal year 24. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion, questions? Okay, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll move for ordinance number 2023-06-018, an ordinance revising annual budget ordinance, budget amendment number eight, fiscal year, hmm, should it be 20?
From this current fiscal year.
Hmm?
Is this current?
Okay, well, it says fiscal year 2022 to 2023.
Yeah, well, I guess the one we're in.
Okay, estimate. I'm thinking 2023, 2024. Anyway, move for it to regular agenda for approval for city council.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Sharice and seconded by Mary Alice, that ordinance number 2023-06-019, an ordinance adopting the fiscal year 2023, 2024, sorry, revising the annual budget ordinance, budget amendment number eight, fiscal year 2022 to 2023, onto city council on the regular agenda. Is there any discussion? Mary Alice.
I apologize, I have another question, seeing as we've had several people come up with Savannah Greens. And Tim, I don't know if this is a question for you or not, but it looks like we have increased the amount of money for alleys for Savannah Green from $200,000 to $300,000, which is a difference of $100,000 according to this. What does that buy us?
So I think what you're referring to is probably the design portion of Savannah Green. I'll let John answer this.
Well, it was the full change, fiscal year 24 is what you're talking about, or fiscal year 23?
It literally says budget ordinance fiscal year 23, 24, so I don't know which one it is.
That would be the fiscal year 24 budget.
Yeah, the full story of that, though, is going from 1.6 million down to 200,000, then up to 300,000.
All right, so that sounds to me like we went from replacement to filling in the gaps. Is that correct?
To maintenance, correct.
To maintenance. And I know that there was something in our packet about how that was prioritized and put towards, was it Vine Street in Illinois, maybe, I think, is what was on there? So what is the long-term plan? I know that we've been talking about Savannah Green alleyways for a long time.
I know we will talk about this in item three, unless you want us to talk about it now.
Okay, so let me see if I can summarize here. So we originally had approximately 1.2 million budgeted for the project. Last year, we changed it to be more maintenance instead of replacement, which was 200,000. Now we're saying we need another 100,000 for maintenance. Is that correct?
The reduction happened this, like, in this planning for fiscal year 24. It happened within the last couple months, when we received bids on the project. It was 1.6 million in the last capital improvement plan.
All right, thank you.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, I ask that the clerk call the row.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
That motion passes. Next item is ordinance number 2023-06-019, an ordinance adopting the fiscal year 2023, 2024 annual budget.
All right, so this one, it is related to what I just mentioned earlier. So in the fiscal year 2024, you will see that $270,000, which is coming from the fiscal year 2023's budget. So that is the unspent funds in this current year, fiscal year 2023's budget being moved to fiscal year 24. And then, again, related to the CIP changes, this is just to reflect what had been changed, or the updates and the estimates in the fiscal year 2024 CIP plan. And then, also, I want to point out that any additional changes that's gonna be made in regards to the CIP after the presentation, that's gonna be added to the budget changes when we adopt the fiscal year 2024 budget. So if there are any changes, we're gonna have a revised ordinance adopting the fiscal year 2024's budget and to reflect those changes in a CIP. All right, and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Grace.
My first one was, thank you, Ali, for touching on that subject. So are you saying to kind of hold off some alley discussions until we discuss the CIP next, and then we'll square it away on the budget, rather than having that discussion now about the budget? Because they're linked, but the CIP is more detailed.
Right, they're linked, but whatever you decide in your discussion about the CIP, we will reflect it in a revised exhibit for the budget ordinance. So that, it probably makes sense to do it that way.
Go ahead, Grace.
Question here about the logistics of putting in a placeholder for environmental grants, and I will admit that this is an idea I don't have as well flushed out, but something I've been talking with quite a few people in the Sustainability Advisory Commission on, probably not dissimilar to the youth services grants. I've been speaking with Solar Grazia and our Sustainability and Resilience Officer at the city, and I think it would be a great opportunity to do some things, like more community gardening, maybe support the composting at the Landscape Recycling Center. There's been asks for edible landscapes on city-owned properties, so you could have fruit trees and berry bushes and things for people available. So I would like to propose adding an environmental grant of $100,000 with details to be figured out later. Slash, question is, I would love some input on the logistics and possibilities of that.
So just from a practical point of view, without even knowing the source of funds, we can't add it to the budget. It has to be budgeted in some fund, and I...
Or if we say the general fund.
It's not impossible, but we don't even have a grant program defined at this point, so I guess I'm confused about, I'm a little confused about why we budget money when we don't even have a grant program at this point.
My thoughts would be, since this is the budget time, this is the time when we're talking about it, we've had talks about a healthy fund balance, and it seems that this would be the time to put something in. And I do admit that the details would need to be figured out along the way, and then there's also the possibilities that if we don't in the next year, then it rolls back to the fund balance or gets carried over. So I just see this as an opportunity to try and make that happen, and with this being the time when we're talking about the budget, it made sense to bring it up with the budget.
So Grace, I guess my concern would be, who is going to manage the grant application process? I mean, you and I have been on the social service grants, and that's a, that's a heavy lift for community development to kind of implement that granting process, and we certainly have a lot of relationships and experience in terms of how we manage those grants, the billing, the different organizations, how they get reimbursed and so forth. So I'm just wondering what your vision is in terms of staffing and how that would be implemented.
Sure, it seems that Grants Management Division would be the best ones to manage the grant, and I understand that that department is small and shrinking even more, so I think it would have to be with, you know, building that capacity. It seems that that's not the way that division is designed to be, that there does need to be more staff to build that capacity, and that that's something that we're working on. I just think that that doesn't need to be the limiting factor, I guess, having hope that we will build that department and have that capacity. And if we don't, then, yes, it doesn't, it doesn't happen.
Yes, Mayor Marlin.
I think another way to approach this is, number one, to ask, is this in your current city council mayor goals? The answer is no. If you're, what you're asking is to stand up an entirely new program, and it's in the Grants Management Division, at this point, we have two people in that division. So perhaps another way to approach this is, once capacity is achieved in Grants Management, you could flesh this out and propose this for next year when we revise the mayor-city council goals. But at this point, we literally do not have the capacity to establish another program in the city.
Just to kind of piggyback on what everyone's saying regarding this particular thing, because this is something, an idea, that I also kind of said a few years back about fruit trees, and, because I think it's always good to have, if we're gonna have trees, have trees to feed people. The thing is, is that someone has to maintain those trees, someone has to, you know, that's a whole other, it's not just about the grants, it's also about the maintenance of everything that comes with that kind of idea. I think it's a great idea, I just don't think that it's something that, right now, the city could actually afford to do, unfortunately. Because with that idea comes a whole lot of other things that have to be put in the works as far as building it up. It's not, it's something that we would have to, I think it would be, if we're gonna try to do that, we'd have to build, build on something smaller and do it kind of a stepstone way, anyway. So that's, that's all I'm saying.
Grace.
Thank you, I appreciate the input on this, and as I said, it's not entirely flushed out, we just wanted to bring it up, and I appreciate the opinions on it. As far as not being on council goals, the stuff like this is what I intended when I was on the infrastructure group, and we had expanded green infrastructure as a category and on city-owned properties, and it seems like this falls in there quite well. And I understand the limitations as far as staff for managing the grants. I absolutely understand that and see that as a valid issue. As far as we can't afford it, that's, that's not true. We have the money, we may not have the staff, I will admit that for sure. And so another alternative is, this could also be money for Public Works. As you mentioned, an excellent point, Sharice, that city staff does need to work to maintain these if it's on city property. And again, it takes money to do that. So it seems like with a lot of the environmental things, that's what it usually comes down to, is that's a great idea, but we don't have the money to do it. So this is the thing about, if you put the money there, then there's the money to do it, and then you can build that capacity. So, um, again, I appreciate the input, and I'm definitely willing to keep working on this in the longer term and look into next year and try and develop it. And without a second on this, then I suppose that's what we'll do. So thank you.
Okay, is there any further discussion on ordinance adopting the, the new fiscal budget? Actually, questions for staff. I'd entertain a motion. If there is no further questions.
If I can find my agenda, I will move this ordinance. Here we go. I will move ordinance number 2023-06-019, ordinance adopting fiscal year 2023, 2024 annual budget to city council with a recommendation for approval.
Second.
And did you want that on the, did you say regular agenda?
It's an ordinance, yeah. Can't put ordinances on consent. Put on regular.
Um, so ordinance number 2023-06-019, an ordinance adopting the fiscal year 2023, 2024 annual budget, was moved by Mary Alice and seconded by Sharice to be moved on to city council for approval on the regular agenda. Is there any further discussion? Grace?
Thank you, so sorry, I forgot a question on this. As while I am saving the Savannah Green alleys for the CIP discussion, this one is for the budget, because what I'm seeing in the budget is that there is still 1.6 million in FY '24 plan in the budget in Fund 203 Motor Fuel Tax. So I was wondering if you could clarify if that is correct? I've got on page 231 of the budget.
Are you talking about the ending fund balance that would be at the end of FY '24?
The 500,000?
So I, I, I see what you're talking about on page 231, the 200,000 and the 1.4 million for Savannah Green alleys. What I can't say is if the CIP was modified after we got that information. Is that possible?
What's reflected on the page that Grace has pointed out is what we had previously. It has been updated down to that $300,000 number in total. So that, that will be reflected in the final.
So the final one would read for Savannah Green alleys, planning 200,000 and construction 100,000?
Three hun, it would be 200,000 in FY '23, and then it would be 300,000 in construction in FY '24.
Thank you. Uh, do we have those most recent updates? Because this is what it says even on the online one. I just need to make sure that we're seeing whatever changes are happening recently.
So I, I think, so we provide the CIP information here in the back of the budget book just as information, but the document you want to be looking at is whatever was provided by Public Works when they presented the CIP.
I guess my ask is, could we have, um, an updated budget with any of these last changes for next week?
Yeah, so that will be updated once we have the finalized number. So right now, it's just, uh, that is the proposed, and the proposed budget book, those are, you know, before the changes that has been made. So the, the final, the adopted budget book, that will reflect what's the, you know, the final, um, CIP.
I just want to make sure we see that before our final vote next week.
Oh, you will not see a brand-new budget document before your final vote next week? It takes weeks of work to put that together, but any changes will be reflected.
Yeah, that will be reflected on the, um, the exhibit. So any changes.
I just want to be sure that we are aware of those changes.
So that, that will be reflected if there are any changes, yeah.
Reflected and presented, right?
Um, that will be, yes. So, so we will make the changes to reflect, to match whatever they have in the CIP plan. And so if, whatever we have here, um, doesn't match, um, the CIP report, so we'll make the changes, and then if, if that is different from what is on here, then we'll have a revised, um, ordinance.
Thank you.
Mary Alice?
So, um, I appreciate that we're not going to publish a whole new book. But I think one thing that would be helpful as we try and go through the book that we have, the ordinance that we have, typically when we get a budget, uh, uh, change, um, we get this kind of single page that's kind of collapses everything that's, that's being changed, right? It would be nice if we could have the reference to the actual page in this book. So for example, especially with the CIP stuff, I think the CIP stuff is very important. There's quite a bit of that right now on the exhibit. But we're just all scanning the book and hearing and trying to match numbers and so forth. So if we can even have, like, you know, this is in Motor Fuel Tax Fund 203, and this is on page, what is this, what, 128 or something like that? That would be helpful for us to be able to line those, those numbers up.
Yes, Ally can do that. And with respect to Savannah Green, it doesn't, so what's in the back of the book is like information only. I'm not even sure it matches to what's actually in the budget on page 129. So they may have been provided at different points in time as, as they were in the process.
I'm raising my hand for myself. I have a question. On page 115, the Sister Cities, will that no longer be in the budget going forward?
So we've been rolling the funds forward that are unspent, so I'm confident they'll have, they'll have some money remaining in the budget, but we haven't been budgeting new money.
Okay. So do you know, is this 11,000 their current balance? Or, and then that would move forward? Or are you saying they've probably spent this?
We would have to wait until the end of the year to know what's actually remaining. At the time we printed this book, we had spent 5,296 of the 11,370. So, you know, if they haven't spent any, any additional, perhaps half of that would carry forward.
Is there any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the row?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes. Thank you, Elizabeth and Ally. Next item is resolution number 2023-06-072R, a resolution approving the capital improvement plan fiscal years 2024 through 2028.
Good evening, council. I can certainly appreciate the challenge of the moving target of the CIP and the moving target of the budget happening simultaneously. So bear with us, but we will get through some of the changes that have kind of happened since our last presentation that will be incorporated in the final budget, as Elizabeth and Ally mentioned. So we're, we, we presented early May on this and published this online and, you know, made it open for feedback and, uh, things of that nature through the last month. Between that and some other changes that have happened since then, staff and, uh, comments have been considered, and we have a few revisions to the capital improvement plan as we've been discussing. Just a timeline of events really started in earnest in March this year. April, draft fund reports and input from partner agencies to see if there were any partnership opportunities. Uh, May 8th is when we produced the fund report to finance, and May 22nd is when we presented the, the draft CIP presentation for council. Um, June 19th was what we considered the end of public comment period on the CIP draft, and then today, we're here with a resolution for approval of the final modified, I'll say revised, CIP from the original draft. I should call it just final, the final CIP. Some of that stuff, uh, like, like you have noted, um, you know, there have been some, uh, more substantial changes than there typically are at this time of year. Savannah Green is one, and John will jump into that a little bit. But some of that happened to be timing-wise with proposed plans and bidding and prohibitively, um, high bid prices for the, the value-engineered rehabilitation cycle that we tried to set up for Savannah Green that ultimately we, we didn't feel like we could support. Now certainly that's on the table for discussion tonight. So I'll let John kind of jump into the highlights to kind of walk you through the changes, and then we'll discuss.
Okay. So, you know, included in your packet, um, we provided a two-page document that just summarized what has changed, um, from when we presented this, uh, report to you in, uh, late May to today. And then just wanted to highlight a few of those with you tonight. For fire stations, number two and number three, uh, there have been some updates to the land acquisition, design, and construction costs, which saw a net decrease of 730,000 for fiscal year '23 and fiscal year '24 when looked at together. And this corresponds with some final programming estimate that's been made just since, uh, in the last month. For the stormwater utility fee, um, we sharpened our pencils some more and refined the revenue projections. Unfortunately, it was a, a reduction in projected revenue. So over the next five years, we'll have less money than we thought we had, um, using some better data. So we just kind of, uh, pulled away from, like, the sewer lining program accordingly, delayed construction of, uh, Boneyard Creek crossing the, uh, stream, sedimentation stream water quality project from fiscal year '25 to fiscal year '27 to, uh, work with the fund balances a little better. And, um, um, on a positive note, the shared use path projects, the one that we got the ITEP grants for, in learning more about the specifics of the program as it is today with IDOT, we found that we can, uh, accelerate the construction schedule to starting in fiscal year '25 rather than fiscal year '26. So we got to move those projects forward a little bit. First Savannah Green, yes, has, uh, has been, uh, touched on so far. We had a, um, uh, we took a pit, an opportunity to pivot because we had, um, received bids in May that were prohibitively high for the work we were trying to accomplish. And so our recommendation, uh, well, we were not going to accept the bids, which were 70% higher than our estimate. And what we were finding is that with the type of work we're trying to get, trying to accomplish, for the alleys with where they sit in the priority score of our network, we do not feel that we could justify spending that money in the alleys. Now, we do, we recognize the alleys definitely need attention, and so we are pivoting to a maintenance program with them, uh, to start in the spring as we bring that back. But, um, wanted to make it a bit more of a right-size fit for where the alleys fit in the priority of our network. What we can do in the five-year forecast by having that extra $1.3 million out of the Savannah Green project is we can move forward to higher priority projects like Vine Street and Illinois Street, moving it forward to an earlier start, um, and adding another project to the CIP of Broadway Avenue from Elm to Park, which was kind of one of the, the higher-ranked, on-the-outside-looking-in projects previously. For the TIF 4, the Cunningham Avenue, um, TIF, we increased the allocation for sidewalks uh, from 100,000 to 300,000 for three fiscal years. This was bringing our total allocations for TIF 4 to approximately $3 million as we come near the sunset of that, uh, TIF. Couple of minor things, we added some notes to the fund reports to clarify which grants have not been awarded yet. Just wanted to make sure it was kind of, you know, not, not lost on anybody that some of these grants were not, um, ours yet. And then updated estimated, um, fiscal year '23 expenses, moved unencumbered forward, funds forward, similar things to what Elizabeth and Ally mentioned, just kind of some accounting, making sure we had our FY '23 expenses more accurate. But so those are, those are really the highlights that we have. And we'll open it for questions and discussion.
Chris?
So, I, I guess, John, I mean, what is your reaction to the public? By the way, I've never heard in the two years I've been on council that Savannah Green was in such bad shape. I've never heard them talk to me or email me about it. But what is your reaction? I mean, you're saying that you're dropping it down in the priority list, and they, they are saying it, it needs to be dealt with now. So what's your reaction to that?
I would say that I, I very much sympathize with them. I've driven the alleys multiple times, um, in rain, in ice. It, they are in bad condition. Unfortunately, they are not unique. They're a unique, they're a unique neighborhood in the city, but their situation of having poor condition for their local streets or alleys is not unique, unfortunately. And, you know, the challenge that we face is that there, there are many, uh, needs like that across the city. And for us to put that much money towards, and the, the sad thing is that the, the bid we got, which was $2.2 million, was only going to address about 50% of the alley surface area. It was not a complete fix, but it was a lot of money.
I, I got a couple of things I would add to that, just for perspective. Uh, we took Anderson off the list recently, which is a much higher priority than the Savannah Green alleys based on our prioritization matrix because it's cost prohibitive. There's a number of roads, if, if you want to jump on our Urbana ID information, just look at condition assessment alone, that are in deplorable shape and will probably remain that way for some time now. Hopefully, the case is, most of these are, you know, low-use roads, dead-end roads, things where we don't want people driving fast down them anyways. You know, it's just, it's, 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 it's a very challenging thing to do this. Uh, you know, when I came here, Savannah Green was in the CIP before I got here, and it was budgeted in at a very high cost figure, and I had trouble at that time wrapping my mind around spending that type of money in that. Before, we had a priority system or anything else. Well, we've continued to develop this, and what we've found is we're, we're being more strategic about these things, and everything keeps pointing to, yes, it's in bad shape, yes, it needs repaired. But how many streets within the city, throughout the city, that see a lot more volume or more, you know, are, are more critical to, like, emergency services routes that are in equally bad condition? It, it's just hard. I mean, the, the answer is the funding is probably 25% of what would be sustainable for our roadway infrastructure and has been for 50 years, 60 years, 70, 100 years since ever we had them. So the hole's just going to get deeper. So being strategic about how we spend our money, if we spend, if we make any bad investments, it hurts us network-wide. A lot of people are pivoting to really this pavement management, you know, spend more money on preventative maintenance to keep the good roads good, spend appropriate money on that middle gap that are still good candidates for rehabilitation. And then reconstruction is probably either only happening with grant funds or if it's a very extremely high priority road. And it's just, it's the nature of just having, you know, such a, you know, inadequate amount of funding to do everything we need to do. And, you know, like I said, this is hap, it didn't happen over one year. It happened over 70, 80, 90 years since the roadway network was installed, so.
And, and just to be clear, um, from what I read in the memorandum and looking through the packet, we're spending about $15 million a year on roads, correct?
I don't know if that number's exactly right. I thi, you know, with the grant funds that are proposed right now, yes.
It's without grants, I'm saying 15, but there is.
Well, I, I don't think, I don't think it's 15 million. I think we get about 3 million combined between state motor fuel tax and local motor fuel tax, and then we have a substantial portion fuel tax and then we have a substantial portion of the general fund deferred to operations and maintenance, which funds Public Works Department maintaining the roads. I think we're closer to like 10 or 11 million.
Okay.
And that's just shooting from the hip, so.
Okay, okay. The other thing I keep seeing is this 46% inflation monster kind of floating around. What am I supposed to make of that, the 46% inflation?
Hopefully that at some point this is going to stabilize. Now, it hasn't stabilized yet because when we talked last year, it was, I think, 21%. And, you know, over the two years, it's now 46%. So we're still, we're still seeing that stuff and it's a combination of, you know, supply chain issues, work demand issues, you know, everybody's flush with work because of federal public infrastructure bills that are coming out where they're injecting a bunch of money but not more resources to do these things. So if you want your project on the list, you have to pay the premium for it.
All right, thanks.
Yep.
Mary Alice?
So ever since I've been on city council, Savannah Green has been talked about. And originally when it came up, it was estimated that it'd be $1 million to fix those alleyways. I actually would like to beg to differ in terms of Savannah being a bit different than other neighborhoods within Urbana. People do use those as their entryway, their main entryway. And so for those of you who haven't been there before, all the garages are facing the alleyway. So you drive through the alley, you park your car, that is where the congregation of vehicular traffic is. I do think it is a little bit unique. My concern is, and so you had said 70%, it went up 70%, but then you gave me, because I did 70%, I was like, oh, that's 2.7 million. Then you said it was 2.2 million. So maybe not quite 70%, but regardless, costs just keep going up. So I feel like we're just kicking the can here with, I don't know a good solution, I don't have a good solution right now, but are there, is there a way to look at the alleyways? You said it was about 50% of the alleys with this 2.2 million cost estimate. Is there a way to identify the ones that are in the absolute worst shape and just do a portion of them, 33% or something?
That's essentially what we're planning to do with the patching, yes.
But that's what you're doing with the patching, not reconstruction. And what I've heard time and time again is Savannah Green has to have reconstruction, that patching just isn't doing it anymore.
Sure. Well, it depends on what is being considered patching. I think the kind of patching we've been doing in the alleys mostly has been spray patching.
Yeah, this is going to be essentially full replacement of dedicated locations. So sometimes that's what happens. Sometimes people get spray patching iteratively to mitigate the problem. The answer is we need to maintain functional operation of these things, which is what we intend to do with the reduced budget.
So can you elaborate? It sounds like, when I hear full replacement, I think you're going to cut a hole in the road and replace that segment of the road. Is that what you're talking about?
Correct. When we say patching, we're thinking full-depth patching. You cut a full segment of roadway out, you take the base out, you replace the base, you patch the pavement. It is fully replaced in whatever quadrant you're doing, but we're just doing a much less square area.
So out of, let's just do percentages, what percentage are you considering to do this replacement slash patching of the alleys? Are we talking 25%, 10%, 75? What are we talking?
I would guess it'd be somewhere between 10 and 25% by surface area, rough guess.
Rough guess?
Mm-hmm.
So, so I guess, I mean, I understand, it sounds like are we doing the patching or are we hiring it?
We'll hire.
This part will be contracted, what we have.
So that's what I don't get. So if we have 50% for full replacement, it's $2.2 million and we have 10 to 25% is $300,000, the numbers just don't seem to add up. So where's the difference?
Well, it's, it's a, what we were trying to accomplish, what we were trying to accomplish with the project that went out to bid was addressing the underlying failure, which was the poor soils preparation, which is done for the whole alleys. It's not the pavement that's bad, it's the soils underneath it. For the areas that we were going to address, we were going to tear out the pavement and dig down about 12 to 18 inches and put new rock in. And it was a more, it was a really more in-depth, basically, we're not coming back here again. That was the kind of approach we were trying to take with that. Unfortunately, I think what really got us was the narrowness of the alleys and the proximity of all the property lines right next to it made it, the constructability issues really drove the prices up, so. Addition to the market forces that are going, this is just a very challenging site to work in because of its constraints. But the patching is going to not be as intense, it's going to be, you know, we're going to be not completely treating the subgrade with the patching. So it's not going to be as good of a quality of a solution either.
So it sounds to me like you've identified the root cause of the failure of the alleys.
Correct.
And the patching slash replacement is not going to treat the root cause, it's only going to cover it. Is that correct?
Partially. So with all pavement stuff, this becomes a benefit cost analysis really, is how much cost are we, how many years are we buying with this dollar per square yard, right? So just for perspective, I think with the bids that we saw, we were going to see like $265 to $270 per square yard for that treatment now for patching and then crack sealing, which I know the residents mentioned the crack sealing that they don't like the appearance of. Crack sealing is a preventative maintenance, so the base is an issue. Now, if we go and repair the worst sets of pavement and then we seal the pavement, that reduces the amount of moisture that can seep into the base, reducing impacts of freeze-thall cycles to reduce further degradation. And, you know, it's probably not going to buy us 50 years, but the answer is it's buying us more time for a less dollar figure for the time being and we have to do that everywhere.
So is it buying us how much time? Are we talking 5, 10, 15, 20, 25?
The patches themselves, the patched areas themselves, it'll buy us, you know, 10 to 20 years realistically.
So have you considered doing more of this?
Yes. I mean, I think really the punchline is that 300, this $300,000 budget, this is not like the last thing we're doing to the Savannah Green alleys. This will have to be a step in a long-term process of, we're going to have to come back there, say in like five to 10 years, and do other areas.
And have you already gotten bids for this?
No, this, because we opened bids in May for the larger project, we've basically just had time to regroup, pivot, and we're looking to go in the spring with this patching and crack sealing.
My last question, I just want to make sure, Tim, that I wrote this down correctly. So we have preventative, we have maintenance, and we have rehab. Those are kind of the three items that I wrote down, is that right?
So I would say maintenance.
Yes.
And it can either be preventative or reactive.
Okay.
And then you have rehabilitation, which is kind of that middle ground where it's too far gone for preventative to really be worthwhile, it's not far gone enough for full replacement, and then you have full replacement.
So full replacement, at the moment, we are counting on grant funds for full replacement. That's what I heard you say.
That's where our minds should get to.
And then for maintenance, that is where you're saying we should spend our city funds? And what about rehab? Is rehab a blend between grant?
Rehab's that gray area in between.
Okay.
So some of it, large enough stuff, you know, potentially. And that's the difference, a lot of like grant funds, they won't even fund, they won't, it would be great if we could get a grant fund to do 100% of the preventive maintenance we've ignored for decades and just do that once. That actually, in my opinion, would be better money spent nationwide than us doing one big project.
All right, I promise this is my last question. So can you put a dollar figure on how much money we are doing with the maintenance preventative versus reactionary?
In the whole plan?
Yes.
We're doing, so our local motor fuel tax is about $750,000, $800,000 per year. That is almost entirely being dedicated towards preventative maintenance moving forward. Our state motor fuel tax, we have actually used it to then fund the rehab programs and then the replacement because grant funds typically are federally funded and they're going to have a lot of special paperwork requirements and things like that, as does state motor fuel tax, which are nearly one in the same. If you're going to be time-intensive on documentation, spend the money that requires us to do it with the federal money together. So our state motor fuel tax fund will be acting as match for federal grants and then funding rehabilitation.
All right, thank you.
In general.
And Mary Alice, I do appreciate you checking me on the numbers there. I'm sorry, there's a number of numbers for the Savannah Green, just to close out here. We had, the budget was 1.6 million. As we went to bids, the estimate of the actual bid package was like 1.2 to 1.3 million. And so then that 70% above that was the 2.2 million. Yeah, I'm sorry about that.
Chris?
Thank you. Keep rolling with the alleys here. I just wanted to backtrack a little bit. I'm starting to appreciate more and more the importance of redoing the subdivision and land developments policy, right? That just some, just take a step back in history too, that this was issues from the development with the soil and maybe the pavement itself also. And so there's a few of these situations with trees and sewers and streets and sidewalks and lights and all sorts of stuff that the developer goes in and builds it and then the city is responsible for adding things and then maintaining it, even when it might not have been built to last. And so I definitely appreciate that we've redone that to try and avoid that problem in the future. Like I said, I'm understanding the gravity of it more and more as more examples come up. So some questions here. Did we get another bid for the full replacement for the alleys?
We received one bid.
Correct. We tried again, is that typical to?
We, the other, another eligible plan holder said that they, it was too big of a project for them with their workload they have this year, so they didn't want to put in a bid on it.
Okay. Just because, you know, optimistic side, maybe if we got some others, maybe we could find some lower bids, maybe not. Also to Mary Alice's points, that the price is going up and up, the longer we kick it down the road, we're all kind of hoping that it will come down after this kind of COVID increases, but there's no guarantees on that. And I also agree with Mary Alice's point and was going to also mention that, that these alleys are unique to some because they're not just auxiliary back alleys, but ones that people need to use on a regular basis. So I'm just wondering if there's some sort of compromise here or the long-term plan? I was glad to hear you say that looking in for grants for the full replacement for the alleys, is that what you're referencing or just in general?
We're not currently pursuing grants, but that would be hypothetically how they would get rebuilt, would be with grant money.
Yeah, I would definitely support that. I was also wondering about the CDTA score and put this in the thing, which I appreciate that we have in general, but I thought, saw that Savannah Green got a zero on that. And with my question on looking at the map, I appreciate you pointing out the link and I'd already looked at the link and it's just like nothing helpful at all. There's no like, there's no sections of what are these community development target areas on the link to this map, so I don't see where they are.
Gotcha, fair enough. It's, to view the community development target areas that you're referring to, which identify low to moderate income census blocks in the city, going to the Champaign County GIS website, there's the list of layers off to the side and it's, unfortunately, it has to be, you scroll down to like other layers for the city of Urbana, it's similar to like turning on the zoning and things like that.
I've got the CDTA layer highlighted and it doesn't show me anything.
Gotcha.
So I'm just wondering if, I would really like to see what that identifies throughout the city and I can't find it.
Sure, sure.
We can get you there for sure.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
And so yeah, I would like to see as much as we can with the maintenance and repair with this patching, I'm glad to hear that it's not that kind of superficial spray patching but going down in some of the most needed or key areas there. I definitely support looking into grants for the long-term and having a long-term plan over the years. I understand the, a little bit of how hard it is to make these kinds of priorities and there's a give and take and we don't have the money to do all the things that we need to do. But I think this is definitely an important issue that we need to have a long-term plan about. And I would also recommend that we communicate with the Savannah Green HOA about where to do some of that patching because people expressed in particular things, you know, we might not think of from the outside if they say there's an elderly couple right here and this is a bad spot and this is what we decide we want to have as one of the priority spots or this is a main entrance way that someone uses on a regular basis. And so I think it would be important to communicate with the area, the neighborhood, when we're thinking about where to do some of that patching. And I was wondering if you had, if you have any inputs, anything we can say as far as a compromise, like would $600 get us to do 20 to 50% of the alley just patching? Or 600,000? Yeah, yeah, if we doubled the 300,000, sorry, the 600,000.
I think, I think some of that is.
That'd be nice.
You know, from our, and we did a study of this whole area, we, because we were trying to find ways to create value and, you know, stretch our dollars in this area. So we did a whole study of this and with the base failure, you know, the patching is the answer. I mean, patching is not that different from full replacement, it's just spot repair full replacement. I think that estimate is based on what we think are the worst of the worst, like operationally, if we were on any road, we would want to go and take care of. I would say that, you know, that could be to be determined. Certainly, you know, if we come, if we go look at this and instead of 300K, it's 400K because, you know, we've, we go out and physically paint this out and we're like, we really need to stretch this another, you know, another panel typically is what concrete is in 12x12 panels-ish. You know, we could do some of that, but I think you're going to start to get diminishing returns where if we're doing too much outside of what is the worst of the worst, we're not doing the worst of the worst in the other locations of the city with that same money, which is entirely fine, you know, if that's the decision. We're just, you know, we're trying to be as best stewardess as we can for the network as a whole. So, you know, that number was thought out, we did look at that, we did go out and kind of identify what we thought was the worst of the worst patches to get that done along with in the crack sealing, which would seal things in to prevent the moisture and the freeze-thall from further degradating the pavement back there.
So you think the 300,000 for this year will get to the worst spots in the area?
I think it's a good starting point and it's actually an approach that we use throughout the city because we don't have enough money or time to do everything is, we're trying to keep things as operational, you know, we try to address the safety hazards quicker, you know, higher, higher volume roads that see more traffic, we want to get to those quicker, you know. The answer is there are a lot of things that, you know, from the untrained eye, if you go drive Savannah Green, you're like, this is really bad, but I could probably take you to 20 other roads in town that you'd be like, this is also really bad. Where then you talk about, do we want to put 200,000 more in Savannah Green or do we want to put 200,000 over here for this one? And it starts to get kind of splitting hairs once you get down to some of that stuff.
But it sounds like there is, this has been on the radar for a while and we are looking for a long-term plan with full replacement in the future. Is that accurate?
Potentially. I mean, it's going to depend year over year, what are, I mean, for perspective, Savannah Green's 20 years old. We have 100-year-old pavement out there and some of it's okay and some of it's really bad. And if we continually replace 20-year-old pavement with full reconstruction, everything will decline rapidly. So we have to be very selective about where we do it.
Sure, yeah. I wish it was better things for me to tell my constituents of that area. I understand it's a tough situation, but I think that, yeah, we need some kinds of plans, that this is a unique one with those subdivision things, that this is kind of, seems like the road equivalent of the Dr. Ellis sewer issues, that there are some unique subdivisions that weren't built the way they needed to be built that have some uniqueness to them that we need to address.
I have a question. On the pavement management system, why is it allocated in '24 so much more, 160,000 more than the other years?
Yeah, so in 2019, we paid to have pavement scanning done where they scanned the entirety of our community to produce the Urbana idea map, which it's available on the CIP page where you can go and physically look at the condition of every roadway throughout the city. At the time, they had talked about doing essentially a third of the city every year and budgeting the same amount over the year. To me, it didn't make sense for us to invest money in a third of the city that it has, you know, the change year over year is not that drastic. So it made more sense to say, let's do it on a five-year cycle, so we'll do it in 2019 and then 2024 would be that fifth year. And then year over year when we do projects, they've actually got degradation models built into that where depending on the distresses and defects within the roadway, some roadways you lose 1.0 PCI per year, some lose a half PCI. And then if we do a project, we go in annually and then we update that. So if a road was a 60 and we did a new road project, it may be 100 now to kind of update the overall averages over the five-year period and then at five years, we'd rescan everything to true up the system kind of.
And have you seen any, so I'm looking at the chart with the green, good. And have you seen any, so I'm looking at the, the chart with the green, good, all the way down to field. Have you seen these percentages change since 2019? Or we're just like playing catch-up and?
Not drastically. I don't know. Do you know, that if, if anything, it's probably still going down. That's the hard truth. We did a bunch of modeling when I first got here with AppTech based on our funding levels that we could dedicate towards preventative maintenance, or sorry, maintenance rehab and replacement. And the model, essentially you can set it up however you want, but we said, how do we get the best PCI for this money over the, the next 10 years? And we spent everything perfectly and we were still losing a half PCI per year based on the funding that we had to dedicate towards that.
And the scan will be an opportunity to really see like, how do we score compared to five years ago, for sure.
I'd be interested to see the new scan results.
Okay. Grace, go ahead. Thank you. I wanted to clarify on the equals projects, equity and quality of life. In the, at 24, FY '24 allocated 1.8 some million. It looks like that's not any new funds. Is that just remaining the 2 million from the first round for the construction?
Correct.
So there's no new money for equals projects this year?
Not, not in this fiscal year. We have it allocated in a future year. I forget whether that was '26 or '25.
Yeah, I see 200,025 and 800,026. And that is, that, those are new funds in '25, '26, but not '24.
Yep, yep.
And I just wanted to add some other things real quick. I appreciated your response to some emails and just wanted to clarify for other council members in the public. I appreciate that we've added some goals for the minority women, disabled veteran business enterprises, right? It's called minority businesses for short. I appreciate that we've added that goal of 10% for engineering consultations and met it with 14%. I think that's awesome and something to come out of our council goals. It's great to see. And then also just highlighting that, as you also mentioned, which I appreciate, that the engineering consultations are only a smaller part, 10 to 30% of the CIP spending. So less than 3% in total. I would love to see that go up more, have a rubric for the human relations commissions when they're doing their equal employment opportunity. And Cunningham Tiff, I appreciate that we're putting stuff there. I feel a big sense of urgency in that one as it's running out soon. And from when I read the 2005 plan, that we still have a lot of work to do. Makes sense that we're not gonna meet that exact plan, but it seems like there's still a lot of work in that area. So I appreciate seeing the 3 million there and some work on sidewalks and talking with community development about other improvement in that area. And also wanted to shout out, appreciate the priority scoring and adding that community development target area. And again, I'd love to see the actual map. Thank you.
And Sharice?
I just was curious, just so that I can have some kind of update regarding the sanitary sewer lateral lining. Because as it's been said several times, costs are going up. And I know that you guys are having to do studies and plans and GIS everything or whatever, the laterals. How quickly will that start taking place? I mean, I see, you know, studies and plans, FY '24, construction, FY '25. Will that particular project be able to be completed considering inflation, considering other, other issues? And considering the simple fact that it's ARPA-funded? So if you could give me some information.
So I think I shared the schedule with you, but the, the target is probably sometime the end of the first quarter, beginning of second quarter. A lot of the, the front-end stuff is actually just getting in touch with people, getting consent, getting information to everybody so they understand what we're doing, what they're signing up for, getting some pre-inspections done of laterals so that we can identify any repair needs ahead of time so that then when we produce the lining contract to go out, the repairs are done ahead of that where they just have to come in and do lining. But the, the timeline as of now is second quarter of FY '24 has really hit the ground on all that stuff. First quarter is probably doing the inspections, first quarter, sorry, third quarter of FY '24. I'm mixing my calendar years and fiscal years now. We'll stay in fiscal years for clarity. Third quarter of fiscal year '24 is we would probably be doing access and investigation of laterals. And then through that last quarter of '24, we'd be doing any spot repair needs that are needed. At the same time, we would be producing design documents to go out to bid for a lining contractor to come in and then line everything, starting FY '25.
Okay, and when you say starting FY '25, you basically mean starting in June of FY '25?
July.
July of FY '25?
And that's, some of that, like I said, a lot of the legwork, there's gonna be a lot of legwork in just getting coordination and consent with this type of project because it's a lot of private entry. And then we have to coordinate and actually be able to get a schedule to put people, potentially in people's living spaces to, to get access to their, their sanitary laterals and things of that nature, to do pre-inspections. So a lot of that's, it's just, it's kind of slow sometimes. We got 144 property owners to coordinate with. They all have different schedules, so I, I'm being conservative here a little bit. If that went swimmingly, you know, we could get spot repairs done and we could potentially go out to bid sooner. Because, because it's ARPA-funded, whether that happens in '25 or '24, it doesn't really matter. We would just come back to the budget amendment to, to pull that money back into '24 if we had to.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, I just have one more question about the parking garage. It says lighting upgrades and security upgrades. What sort of security upgrades were you thinking here?
Lighting is the primary thing as we're replacing the lighting through there. I don't think we have speculation of actual physical security cameras at this time, but we've had some issues there in the past that I think we're just trying to make it safer in general with that, so.
Okay, I was just curious, thank you. Any more questions about the capital improvement plan? Okay. It's motion time.
I will move resolution number 2023-06-072R, resolution approving the capital improvement plan for fiscal year 20 years, 2024, 2028, to City Council with a recommendation for approval.
Second.
Okay, and would you like that on the regular or consent agenda?
Regular.
Okay. It was moved by Mary Alice and seconded by Sharice. Resolution number 2023-06-072R, a resolution approving the capital improvement plan, fiscal years 2024 to 2028, on to the City Council for approval on the regular agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Uh, Sharice, can I say something?
Oh, discussion. Oh, okay, discussion.
I, I liked Grace's comment about including the HOA in some of these conversations. And certainly today, you've given us a little bit more, shed a little bit more light in terms of what your plans were on how to move forward with rehabilitation, patching, whatever we're gonna call it for Savannah Green. I think that's an excellent idea to just talk to those residents with an HOA board. Simply describing the spray patch versus the replacement of chunks, I think, will go a little bit a ways. I'm sure they'll still be disappointed, but it's, 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 it is a bit of a midway step. So I would encourage you guys to reach out to that organization.
Grace?
Sorry, I have one more question. With the Cunningham Tiff for, what I see on the CIP online for the FY '24 plan is 821,000 some dollars. Are you saying that total is updated to 3 million now? Or would some be coming from a different fund than the actual Tiff four fund?
I believe that the total was 3 million over the three fiscal years, FY '24 through '26.
Okay, that's the total there.
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, with no other discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, that resolution passes. Next, thank you, fellas. Next item is resolution number 2023-06-073R, a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement with the Board of Trustees of the University of Illinois concerning certified housing inspections term of 2023 to 2026.
Right, so the Building Safety Division has done, for years has done the private certified housing with the University of Illinois on an annual basis. Last year, due to time constraints, they came to us with just a one-year agreement. So this year, they came back with a three-year agreement to get us back on the same cycle as Champaign. So the, one of the big concerns last year and the reason that it was kind of delayed was they've seen a decrease in certified housing, obviously, and our numbers were still continuing to go up. So we, we negotiated with last year. We tracked our hours last fall like to the minute to basically, to validate where our numbers were. Once we showed that to them this, you know, over the winter, they were satisfied. So now they've came back with a three-year commitment. So, and like I said, that'll get us back on track with our normal process. Does anybody have any questions?
Okay, no questions. Go ahead, Grace.
Uh, just a quick one. If, my recollection is that we've been advised by our legal team asking up the line that it is okay for university employees to vote on this. That's others' recollection confirmation? Thank you.
Okay, if no questions?
I'll make a motion.
Yeah.
All right, this one's gonna go on the consent agenda.
Okay.
We'll see if we'll have more. All right, I will move resolution number 2023-06-073R, resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement with the Board of Trustees of the University of Illinois concerning certified housing inspectors for the term of 2023 to 2026, to the consent agenda.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved by Mary Alice and seconded by Sharice. That resolution number 2023-06-073R, a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement with the Board of Trustees of the University of Illinois concerning certified housing inspections, term of 2023 to 2026, be moved to City at Council for approval on the consent agenda. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, that motion passes. Thank you, Nick. Last item under new business is ordinance number 2023-06-020, an ordinance approving a major variance at 410 West California Avenue, LLC at 410 West California Avenue. Case number ZBA 2023 MAJ-01.
Good evening, Council. This is a request by Andrew Fell on behalf of Jim Planey to increase the maximum total width of access drives from 45% to 54% at 410 West California Avenue in the R2 Single Family zoning district. The zoning ordinance allows the access drive to be up to as wide as 45% of the lot width to ensure that vehicle parking does not dominate the street face and requires a major variance to increase that allowed width. The property is located on the north side of California Avenue between South McCullough and Birch Streets, just west of Lille School, which is this large lot here. This is a residential area dominated by homes fronting the street, many with detached garages. The existing house accesses California Avenue from a shared access drive and accesses the alley to the north. 410, the subject property is on the left and 408, its neighbor, who it shares the access drive with, is on the right. The lot is allowed a total of 17.6 feet of access drive, which is shown in this blue polygon here, including the shared access drive's current three feet. Additional information about the lot's history and configuration are available in the Board Staff Report in Council Exhibit A. This slide shows the rear of the lot from the alley with the shared access drive along the east property line, shown in the blue polygon. This easement ends approximately 20 feet south of the alley. Parking is currently in the rear of the house and a gravelled yard. You can see cars parking there in 410's rear yard. The applicant would like to build a new house with a two-car garage with an access drive off of California Avenue. Their preferred concept plan is shown in Sheet A1 of the application. You can see the garage is here in front of where the house starts behind it. And staff provided the applicant with alternatives to accommodate vehicle parking that would not require a variance. One of these alternatives was to build the garage behind the house and have it access the alley. This is essentially what Sheet A2 provided in the application depicts. These alternatives are discussed in the Board Staff Report. And this slide simply compares the street-facing and alley-facing garage options. Street is on the left and alley is on the right. The zoning Board of Appeals held a public hearing on this request on May 17th. The Board found that the request met one of the six criteria and voted with three ayes and one nay to forward the case to the Committee of the Whole with a recommendation to approve. Staff found that the variance request met one of the six variance criteria, was neutral or did not meet two of the criteria, and did not meet three of the criteria. Of those, staff found that the proposed street loading, two-car access drive and garage are not in character with the neighborhood, which features primarily houses fronting California Avenue with garages in the rear, often sharing access drives and/or garages. This can be shown on the photos shown here and included in the staff report. The upper picture is showing the north side of California Avenue from the south and the bottom picture shows the houses, looking at them from the north. So you're seeing the rear of the houses. Garages' locations are highlighted with the stars along Cedar Alley, showing that these garages are primarily along, detached garages accessed off of Cedar Alley or accessed from, access drives that get to there from the street, but that the garages are along the alley. Further, the concept plan on Sheet A2 depicts an alternate plan that requires no deviation from the zoning ordinance. The full discussion, including the criteria, can be read in the minutes, including, included as Council Exhibit C. And the criteria are discussed more fully in the Board Staff Report and summarized in the Council Staff Report. Staff have prepared an ordinance in line with the Board's recommendation. If Council concurs with the zoning Board of Appeals, they should approve the ordinance. If Council concurs with staff, they should deny the ordinance. That's the end of my presentation. The applicant, Jim Planey, is here and can answer clarifying questions as will I.
Okay. Any, Sharice, go ahead.
Did I hear you say that the, the applicant is building a, a new house? And he wants to change the, okay, so he's building a new house and he's adding, he's taking away the access driveway? Is, I'm, I'm trying to wrap my head around the plan.
There's no plan to do anything with the shared access drive. And there is a recorded access easement between the neigh, the, the neighbor and this owner that is a, a perpetual easement until it gets taken out through some court of law or whatever. But that is, that access drive is here, shown in the blue polygon. That would stay there. And they're proposing to add an additional access drive, which is where these two cars are proposed to be. Again, this site plan is a conceptual plan. It's not tied to the variance with any sort of condition, but this is- It's not tied to the variance with any sort of condition, but this is the idea that they are basing the requested variance on.
I'm, 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 so the, the access drive would still exist and go from, go to both houses in the back?
The shared access drive.
The shared, the shared access drive is, and someone had, one of them has an, uh, a det, detached garage, or is there going to be, I'm trying to understand?
There's, there's currently, the, the original detached garage has been gone for decades. So there's simply parking that's accessed in the back by the shared access drive or from the alley.
Okay.
The new house is proposed to have its own attached garage.
Okay. So the new house will have an attached garage to, um, that will empty out into the alley or will, that's how, that's the design he's going to use?
That's the question. They would like to have it access California Avenue with a two-car-wide access drive.
Mary Alice?
Yeah, I'm, I'm a little turned around here as well. Okay, so, uh, we have, we have a house and then we have an access drive. We have no current garage in the back, but there is an alley. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so the proposal is to, the, the reason I'm confused is because what I think you're showing here is California, the north side of California with the two cars coming off, and then the attached garage, right? Sorry, attached garage. So are they tearing down the house and then putting a garage in front of the house?
They are, they would demolish the house.
They're going to demolish the house?
Build a new house.
Yes.
With an attached garage.
In the front.
That is what they are proposing to do.
They're proposing that the garage go in the front rather than in the back. And then, so according to their, um, thing, they say that it's not possible to put a garage in the back because of the turn radius and the alley?
That is what they assert.
That's, that's, that's what the, the applicant states. And the staff had said that there is an alternative for having a garage in the back. That was your alternative B or something like that?
That was actually an alternative plan that was included in their application.
Oh. Okay, so they wouldn't need a variance for that?
Correct.
And, and the reason why the applicant, I believe, is standing there, I'd love to hear your thoughts in terms of why that, uh, solution is not feasible for the project.
Yes, please approach the mic.
Thank you. Uh, I'm Jim Planey, and my wife Rita Planey is right here. We own 410 California. We purchased it last year. It's next door to our son and granddaughter and daughter's house, Lower Courts, at 412. We've met just tonight with the other neighbor at 408, who's very pleased that we bought this aging home, and we're going to tear it down. All we really want to ask, all we ask you to do for the driveway is we're going to build our garage on the front and our house on the back. And all we have really asked for is a wider driveway curb cut. Uh, we're going to put the garage in the front. We have a zoning, uh, right to do that. Many new homes today in U- Urbana are built with the homes in the front. We can't come off our narrow alley. Uh, we've tried to design it with our architect, and it doesn't work for us. So that's all. I mean, we're, uh, I, I think the gentleman here will tell you that, the, the main variance is that we want a wider driveway cut, not, not put it in the back or in the front. That's not the question. You know, we are, it's legal to, to put the garage where we want to put it, off California.
No, I understand that, sir. Um, I, I guess, uh, one of my concerns is, is that that area, for the way the neighborhood is built, most of the houses do not have garages before the house.
Most of the houses don't have a garage on this block.
I don't have a garage on my block, but, um, yeah, so most of them have, if they do have garages, they have them in the back.
This alley doesn't even go through to both streets.
That is not correct. It goes from McCullough to Birch. I just drove it the other day.
Pardon?
I just drove it the other day from McCullough to Birch Street.
Did you get all the way through?
Yes.
Okay. But anyway, our, our concern is not the alley.
So I, I guess my, my question is, you had given us a, a aerial view of the other houses that have garages. Are those houses actively using them as a vehicular garage? Or are they just, uh, this is not the, keep going back?
But the question...
With the stars.
The question is a wider curb cut. Otherwise, we got to back out at an angle to the street, and we're trying to avoid that. We're trying to avoid, we want to go straight out from the garage to the street.
So if, I, I guess my question is, if we do not approve this, you're still putting the garage in the front, you're just going to have a difficult way of getting out of the driveway. Is that correct?
It'll just be mu, not much more difficult, but more difficult.
Problems with the alley is the turn ratio is so tight, because the alley's very small and encroached, and so to come in, you know, because we went in our head, nobody wants to come in and ask for a variance, you know? Went through everything to try and figure it out. But you would have to come in, couldn't make the turn, because this is a very narrow lot. You have to back up, back forth, back and forth, like a three, kind of like a three-point turn to get in. And then to get out, you'd either, you'd have to do the same thing and either back up down the alley or go forward down the alley, and this is not a well-maintained alleyway. It's, it's all in difficult. A lot of the people here actually keep cars outside. They have lots of cars in their backyards, you know? They like to work on it.
Yeah, I noticed.
Um, so, you know, as far as saying, are they parking in any garage, I, you know, it's hard to tell. Most of them don't have it. Part of our problem here is that, you know, we share a driveway with the neighbor, and we don't want to, uh, uh, insult their ability to park. So, um, we can't use that, you know, we don't want, we can't really use that part of the driveway, so we, we are keeping that easement, so they can use, uh, the driveway as they have for years and years and years.
Are you saying you don't want to block their, their access? Is that what you're saying?
Well, we can't really, we can't really take that. You know, I mean, it's co-owned, so we can't really, um, um, uh, take that away from them. You know, you, what good is a three-foot driveway? They need, uh, let me put it this way. It's like when Mark Twain said, "If I owned that dog, I'd shoot half of them." You know, you can't, you can't take away, uh, half of their driveway. So it's a difficult, you know, it's a difficult...
Comment on the easement, the neighbor has three feet of the alley driveway, and we've got three feet. It's only six feet. So it is there, but we can't use it. We can't use it for coverage, you know?
Can't use it to park.
We can't build a house up on it.
Sure, sure. I'm just wondering if you can use that to turn into the new garage that you're building. Okay, thank you.
So that clarifies it a little bit.
It's not, it's, it's very complicated.
And then the, the request also was two minor variances for the side yards, because we've got a very narrow lot to build on. There's only 30 feet. That follows the driveway question, the two variances that were, that the zoning Board of Appeal...
Grace?
Um, so could you clarify for us here? So this is just for the major variance, right? And the minor ones are already worked out?
Everyone was decided by the zoning Board of Appeals.
By the commission and all that stuff. Okay, so we're just here for the major one, which is not about putting the garage in the front or back. So to clarify, they can put the garage in the front.
Yes.
This is just about making the driveway wider?
Correct.
Is that right?
Yes.
Can you explain to me again the advantages? Because it looks like you're making it for two cars instead of one. Is that kind of what the width turns out to in practicality? That you would be allowed to have a smaller entrance into your garage that would be for essentially one car, right? And then you want it wider in this variance, which would essentially fit two cars. And could you restate? You said something about how that would help with your exit onto California Avenue. It looks like you still wouldn't really have space to turn around in that driveway.
Going to set the garage 20 feet back from the building line, so guest parking or our, our sons, if they had to park there, could park off the sidewalk, onto our lot, and then start the garage.
Yeah, get off, off the street, there's a restricted, cars, you get off the street there, they don't have a garage with their house.
We envision letting our son and daughter-in-law use the garage.
Sure, uh, thank you. And then Marcus would, um, could you restate what is counsel, or what is staff's reason for not recommending approval? Just because it only meets, do you say one of the six? Or is there another safety reason or another reason why staff is not in support of this?
The, I think the strongest criteria that we felt it did not meet was the character of the neighborhood. There are no houses on this block that have a, a garage that fronts and accesses out onto California Avenue. On the block to the east, there are two newer homes that have front-facing garages, but the rest of them all have detached garages, um, in the rear. So in a very walkable neighborhood where there are access drives coming off of California or shared access drives coming off of California, adding in another front-facing garage is altering the character of the neighborhood. The other criteria was that, uh, the sixth criteria is that, is this the minimum deviation from the zoning ordinance to achieve what the applicant would like? Well, they themselves proposed an alternative that would not require a variation from the zoning ordinance, which was to put in a detached, sorry, a garage that accesses the alley. It could have, still have the two-car-wide access drive, because the zoning ordinance regulates the width of the access drive in the required front yard and side yard, but not in the required rear yard. So the access drive is actually allowed to be wider in the rear yard, which would be the yard, you know, adjacent to the alley. So they could put in the two-car-wide access drive in the rear yard, onto the alley, without a variance.
Thank you for the explanation. And while I agree with you with the characteristic of the neighborhood, that front garages aren't really, um, that common there, um, and that while the back, I think, would be preferred as well, it seems like, as you said, that's not what this is about, though, right? It's just about the width of the driveway. So even if we vote no to this, they can still put a small, a more narrow driveway on their front garage.
Correct. And they, they could even put in a two-car-wide garage, just only with up to 14 and a half feet of access drive to that two-car-wide garage.
Okay, thank you.
Can I assess from the meeting you and I were both at, or no, I watched it on, on The zoning Board of Appeals, basically, about the, uh, major variance, felt in that meeting, in the end, when it was a three-to-one vote, that it wasn't much to ask for, and why not just give it to these people? Was that not pretty much how it was taken?
Yes.
Okay.
That's where they said it only, it only, uh, it met one of the three cri, sorry, one of the six criteria, and they felt that that was sufficient to, to recommend approving it.
Chris?
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry. Um, Marcus, my question is, yes or no on this ordinance, there's going to be a garage in the front, right? I mean, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
And our architect does not feel we can design it off the alley, but he's not here to address that.
So we're getting a garage...
What was your question?
Well, I mean, I'm just making the observation that either way, you know, out of, the out-of-character garage on, on the street is, is going to happen, because it's legal, is what I'm hearing, right?
It's legal for them to build a garage there, yes.
Yeah, and I'm assuming the architect will make it look nice, right?
We're going to try to.
Yeah, yeah, and compatible.
Our kids are right next door. We want it to look nice.
Okay.
It will be perfect.
Yeah, no, I know, I'm not asking for that. I'm just, you know, I'm, I'm assuming that it'll be compatible with other structures in the area, correct? Okay.
Yes, sir. It will.
All right.
Yes, Mary Alice?
I, I was going to make a motion, but if you have more questions.
Yeah, um, were the included emails the only correspondence from the public? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, Mary Alice.
All right, um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna move this ordinance with no recommendation to City Council. So I will move ordinance number 2023-06-020, an ordinance approving a major variance at 410 West California Avenue LLC at 410 West California Avenue, case number ZBA 2023 MAJ- oh one.
I'll second. Thank you.
Okay. You can have a seat now. Thank you. Um, ordinance, ordinance number 2023-06-020, an ordinance approving a major variance at 410 West California Avenue LLC at 410 West California Avenue, case number ZBA 2023 MAJ- zero, dash, zero one, was, um, moved by Mary Allison, seconded by Chris, um, onto City Council with no recommendation. Is there any discussion? Yes, Mary Alice?
I, I thought I would provide a little bit of context for, for my motion here. This one's hard, and, and this is why. A, that house that, that is currently on that property is certainly in need of either some TLC or to be teared down. So, I mean, I, I really appreciate, um, somebody coming in and saying that they, they want to put in a better structure there, so there's that. The second piece is, is that in this part of Urbana, we have non-standard land areas, right? Standard size is 60 by 120, I think, roughly speaking, but we've got these weird ones, which are like 35 by 70, with, anyway, so there's some crazy lot lines here. So, a bad house on a really small lot. Um, I personally don't like the attached garage on the front, but that's just me. Uh, and, and, you know, it can be built regardless of what this vote is or is not, right? So that, that, it's a little hard. Um, I think I'm going to go drive down that alley to see for myself. But I do really appreciate people wanting to come in and invest and build, um, something that is usable for, for their purpose as well as for the neighborhood. I love the idea of having, um, family, uh, having an, an area here in, in West Urbana, so that's my reason for forwarding it with no approval. I just need a little bit more time to chew on it.
Any other discussion? Okay, um, with no further discussion, would the Clerk go through?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Okay, that ordinance passes. Um, next item on the agenda is a discussion, council discussion on budget and budget side ledger, letter by council members Wilkins and Evans.
Thank you, Council.
You want me to start, Chris?
Uh, sure, unless you want me to.
Okay, uh, well, uh, this is regards to, um, the LPRs, uh, license plate readers, um, and, um, last week, Council, I mean, Member Wilkin proposed a side letter that would require, um, any future purchase of license plate readers be brought for approval to the council. Um, and, um, there was further discussion, uh, regarding, would, uh, the mayor assuring, um, the public and the council that, uh, of course, license plate readers would be brought before the council. Um, and I, I won't speak for the mayor, and the mayor will, will say what she's going to say, but basically, um, Council Member Wilkin... but basically, council member Wilkin is proposing a side letter, which I don't think would hurt, but either way is fine with me. But I'll let council member Wilkin explain.
Sure, thank you. I had a few things to say, and then if it's all right with the chair, I would put up, what I'm thinking about is draft language, so you have something to look at. So, to clarify why I think this is needed, to clarify in the budget about the funds in the police line items. One is because there's no current policy on license plate readers, so the police department could spend the approved budget funds on license plate readers or other newly implemented surveillance technology without council approval. This is even coming directly from David Westner's recent email responses. Also, the no vote on license plate readers last year was only about the budget amendment, not about the implementation of license plate readers. If the funds were available in the existing line items, license plate readers could have been purchased without council approval if it didn't require a budget amendment. Also, implementation of LPRs and other surveillance technology requires due public process and approval from council. There's been a history that's been built of mistrust over the past two years, mainly from the follow-up crisis correspondent model that was implemented regardless of a budget amendment initiated by council, requiring council approval for that implementation. Council did not get to vote on it, and it was considered non-binding because of how staff had added it to the ordinance in a whereas clause. Last year, council was only asked about the implementation, or not asked about the implementation of LPRs, only asked about the budget amendment, not about if they were allowed or what the policy would be. This demonstrates to me that the city executive is under the impression that they don't need council approval for license plate reader implementation, only to move the money around to purchase them. What I'm proposing, that I'll pull up here, only requires due public process and approval from council for the purchase of license plate readers or other newly implemented surveillance technology, for this budget period only. It does not ban them or set policy on them. I agree that policy and implementation of such things requires public engagement and policy from elected representatives in a larger conversation. So, my questions are, why wouldn't you support this? The mayor and city leadership have already confirmed, at least through email, maybe they'll have some statements as well, that they don't plan to purchase them without council approval. So, what's the harm in supporting just having that in writing? And also, again, this doesn't state any policy on LPRs, it just requires council approval. So, whether you're in support of license plate readers or not, this is about public process and council approval, not whether we implement them or not. So, the question is, do you support having due public process and council approval for license plate readers or other new police technology? And if so, why not clarify that in writing for this budget period? If that's right with the chair, I would pull up what I'm thinking of, and I would love to have input from other council members, any additions or changes, any kinds of compromise, or what your thoughts are. So, if I give people a second, I could also read for the public, who may be small, or hard of seeing that screen. So, I was originally thinking a side letter. I am thinking about proposing this as an amendment to the budget ordinance itself, and again, would love feedback from other council members. So, I'd read what I'm thinking of proposing so far. In the whereas clause, it's some background. Whereas it is this council and city's responsibility to legislate matters of public safety and accountability to the public, and any new technology or major systems regarding public safety require due public process and approval from council. And whereas, as of the passing of this budget, there is no current city policy on license plate readers or other police surveillance technology, and it is necessary to clarify the council's position on use of existing budget funds. And then in the whereas, I would propose to add a section that reads, "The approved budget for fiscal year '23 to '24 does not preauthorize or pre-approve the use of budget funds for license plate readers, drone surveillance, or other newly implemented surveillance or investigatory technology. Any purchase or implementation of such surveillance technology requires due public process and approval from council."
Mayor?
I'd like to put in two words for the public record, the position of the city, and it focuses on automated license plate readers, no other types of technology. The City of Urbana will not authorize or purchase automated license plate reader, ALPR technology, without explicit majority approval from the Urbana City Council. While the prior debate and vote on ALPRs centered on a budget amendment to purchase ALPRs rather than a general policy statement, the council discussion and four-to-three vote defeating the amendment made the position of, and concerns of the majority of the city council very clear.
Mary Alice?
All right, so I, I'll give you two different takes on this. The first one, and I'm the one who said last time, that there really isn't wiggle room in the budget for the police department to go behind everybody's back and, and purchase surveillance equipment such as ALPRs, without having to come to city council for moving their funds from different areas. And so, there, there was some, Chris had emailed several of us, I think the whole council actually, about, about the, the fact that we, you know, didn't approve the budget amendment, and it was because they didn't have the money to buy the number that they were proposing. So, they had to come to city council to say, we want to do this, this is where we think the fund should come from. In my read of the, of the budget, they would have to still do that. But let's just put that aside for a moment, and let's just think politically here for a moment. Frankly, it would be a huge loss of trust for the administration and the police department to do something behind, behind city council's back on this, given that we've had so much public input and so much conversation and research and so forth. So, I mean, for that reason, I, I, I trust that they are not going to go behind our backs and do something like that. All right, so I'm, I'm going to put that over there. Now, to this point, to the budget ordinance proposal. It's pretty broad, drone surveillance, other newly implemented surveillance or investigatory, that, that is huge. The reason it's huge is because there's lots of things that we haven't thought about. There are new programs that people buy to, you know, detect child pornography on Facebook. I mean, there's, that's, that's a form of investigative technology, for example. I'm just making that up as, as one example. It's very, very broad, and, and due to that, A, I don't think it's necessary, because I don't think in the climate that we're in, I don't think we're going to move forward with anything without having some more public conversations about it. But B, I think that this is very broad, and, and I wouldn't support it as it's written now.
Chris?
I won't be supporting this, and I won't be supporting it or any idea of it, basically because it really, from my experience with dealing regarding the ALPRs and everything, obviously, certain, obviously, council doesn't really care what the public thinks, because you had petition, if, number one, had it not been for myself and Linda Turnbull even bringing up the issue, it wasn't something that was even on the agenda of city council or anyone else, not even the police, based on the fact that it was never, no one ever came to me saying, do you think that maybe with all this gun violence, you might want to have somebody, you know, you might want to get some kind of surveillance up? It was actually a request of the community that was being affected regarding the gun violence and everything else, that we, we requested ALPRs, we actually requested surveillance. The ALPRs were a compromise based on what, what could be afforded. It wasn't even, that wasn't our first choice, that was something we settled for. So, regarding this, we don't know what's going to happen in the future, at least I don't pretend to. And the, the mentioning, or even the city coming forward requesting the budget amendment or any of that, was really based on the request of the community that it affected, that the, the violence affected, for us to get this type of, of technology in the first place. So, I don't expect that the city or departments in the city would even attempt to try to do something otherwise without the express request from a, a segment of the community. And I could, I'm not going to answer for what's, or try to even guess what's going to happen within the next four or five years regarding any of this. If the time comes up, I, I'm assuming that, once again, it would take a request from the community, not that, not that it would be actually observed or thought about. But I, I'm, I'm, I'm assuming, because of this time, it took a request from the community, and, and that request was denied, that it would also take a request from the community in the future for any of this to even come back up.
Chris?
Well, my recollection was that on the September 20th agenda item, on the September 20th agenda, a mysterious, I'll call it vague, abstract description of gun violence technology was put on the agenda. I don't remember the exact words, but it didn't say license plate readers. It said something vague and kind of mysterious. And then, at the September 20th meeting, it was surprised, it's license plate readers. So, whether there was this request of the community for this, I never saw it. I just saw it as a sudden, sudden insert into the agenda all of a sudden. That's, that's what I remember.
Chris?
Okay, so, to remind you, I believe it was in June that Linda Turnbull came to a meeting, on a Zoom meeting, and she said what she said after that. Linda and I met, talking about the surveillance. See, I don't have to involve you in that, so, okay, I'm just, I'm just, you know, okay. And we, she and I met, she went and got all the signatures, which were notarized by the city and included in the packet. And then, as we did discussions, and you can say September, but discussions, during the time we were having discussions was when that house got even shot up on, off of Goodwin and Church. While we were still discussing, are we going to do this, should we do this, how much it's going to cost, so on and so forth. Nonetheless, all of that information was based on a request from the communities that were most affected by the gun violence that was going on at the time. And that continues to go on. And if it, to be honest, if it wasn't for the, the fact that the, the city of Champaign and Champaign County went ahead and put those, those types of investigative tools in place, we, we're lucky to be able to even have any kind of, that we can get that kind of information, because that, it's not like the gun violence stopped just because it's got, you know, overturned or, you know, denied. It still happens. But our, our, our police department think, you know, we have good police department and good, good investigators, but another tool that they've been able to use, fortunately, has been information from ALPRs from Champaign and Champaign County and Rantoul and the areas. We're the donut hole. So, we've been fortunate for that, to be able to use, to have access to their, and their information. But it wasn't just something that popped up, you know, like fell out of the sky. That was something that had been discussed for quite a few, the, the problem was trying to figure out how to fund it. And the police department offered to come out of $50,000 of their equipment budget to fund it. That's what I remember. So, it, I don't see, that, that's the, that's the only thing, and we can say, yeah, the budget amendment, the budget amendment came around based on the fact that the, the police department said, we'll give up $50,000 of our equipment budget for that, if it's going to help people feel safe. And then, it was not something that was brought forth just out of the blue. It was something that was discussed between me and one of my constituents, and between myself and the mayor and, and the city administrator, as well as the chief of police, and how we could come to some kind of compromise on trying to tamp, tamp down the gun violence that was going on in the neighborhoods that, in my neighborhood in particularly, but also in southeast Urbana, in that neighborhood where there was also, and it continues to be, some gun violence. So, it's not something that just dropped out of the sky.
I do remember, Charisse, and I'll stand, stand corrected, you're right, Linda did do that petition. And it was for video surveillance, correct?
Right, and I said, I've, I've not said that it was for anything else. It was originally for video surveillance, because our, our, our neighborhoods, our community felt scared and afraid to, even if they had ring doorbells and any of that, they, they didn't want to have to put themselves, and so, that was our, our conclusion, was that, well, you know, cameras don't tell no lies, you know? Cameras, nobody's going to come and, and shoot up your house because of a surveillance camera. But that was not what could be afforded by the city. So, that compromise of ALPRs is what, what we came to.
With regard to the resolution, I, I don't have a problem with it. Again, if we're all in agreement that we were, we would always come forward to the council for approval, have a public discussion, I don't see this resolution has had, you know, challenges that are, or changes anything that we've already agreed to do, but go ahead, mayor.
Mayor, go ahead.
I would point out again, the language in, in this resolution is extremely broad. It's very vague, and it covers far more than ALPRs. We're clear on where we stand on ALPRs. We're all on the same page here. We're not going to do anything on ALPRs without, first of all, I don't know, we'll ever bring it back to council in the near future, but it certainly would require an explicit vote of the city council. That's clear. Staff, the administration, top to bottom, understand the position of the city council. But as this language is, it's far too broad.
Chris?
Yeah, I was wondering if it would be more agreeable to folks if it were just license plate readers and not other surveillance technology.
I would be agreeable to that as well.
How does the chair participate? Do I have to, like, give it up to speak? Okay, Mary Alice, would you take the chair?
Sure, I'll take the chair, and the chair recognizes Chandra.
So, I completely understand where the reasoning behind wanting to include this. But I also understand, like, the mayor is publicly announcing and saying that her and her administration will not be purchasing license plate readers without explicit approval of city council. So, to me, that's okay. I think that would be enough for me right now. And like Mary Alice said, that would be a superb breach of trust for the purchase of ALPRs, even if, you know, she said that, and we also voted last year to not fund those items. So, I don't think that, I don't know if this is necessary for this. Now, if you want to, you know, go into the next fiscal year and discuss a policy or, you know, whatever around surveillance equipment or investigative technology, I think that could be something to be discussed. But I don't, I think we've sort of made our point with license plate readers over and over and over again. I think they hear us and see us and understand how majority of the council feels about it. So, I don't know if it's necessary. I appreciate your work on this and making sure that, you know, reaffirming that our wishes are held up. I just don't know if it's necessary at this point. Thank you.
Do you want the chair back?
Yes.
And I relinquish the chair back to Chandra.
Thank you. So, council members Wilkins and Evans, given this discussion, what do you see happening next, I guess? What is?
I imagine proposing this next week and failing is my expectation. I plan to propose it either way. I've stated my reasons for why it's important. I haven't been convinced out of them. My reasons all still stand. I don't feel the need to repeat them. I plan to propose this next week, and everyone can make their own vote on whether they support it or not. I am open if it changes anyone's perspective, if it's just about license plate readers and cut the other technology. And if not, then I'll just keep it as is, but I'm open to discussions or feedback before next week, if anyone would like.
Okay. I think that concludes that discussion. So, the next item is council input and communications. Does anyone have any input? Mary Alice?
All right, so I know that we went all around last time. I just wanted to let the public know that there are a lot of opportunities to do, basically, I'm going to call it a budget game, being able to prioritize how the city spends the money, not for this current fiscal year, but for planning and for the comprehensive plan. There's, I think, two in the evening, there's two during the day. I guess I can ask staff if those up on the city website so that everybody, so if you want to see, you do not have to go to the one that's specifically for your ward. If you want to come to Ward 1, which is at the Red Herring next Thursday evening, I would be happy to see more people out there. But there's lots of opportunities depending on people's schedules, so I just wanted to pull that to people's attention.
Charisse?
I just want to say, we had, there was a plan for the Imagine Urbana meeting tonight at King School, and it was really disappointing because no one came. So, not anyone. I'm hoping that if you had intended on coming and you just forgot, or you had something else to do, there are other of these same meetings that will be happening at every ward, starting tomorrow. Which ward is it going to be?
It'll be my ward tomorrow, 9:00 AM to 10:30 at Town and Country Apartments, 1032 Kerr Avenue. And there will be a little breakfast giveaway, too.
Oh, well, maybe we didn't give away anything, so that's why folks didn't show up. So, we just ask them to care. Anyway, so, I just wanted to make that statement. You can still access this information on the city website. So, I'm hoping that there will be more interest shown. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, with nothing else before this committee of the whole, I call this meeting adjourned. Oh, mayor?
I would ask council member Wilkin to share this proposed language with the council and administration. Thank you.
And we're adjourned. Good night.